I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we trust, and just as for all.
Blessed thus as we begin this commissioner meeting, guide our minds and hearts so we may work together for the good of our community. Help us to be generous in our outlook, courageous in the face of difficulty, and wise in our decisions. Amen.
Amen.
In compliance with the open public meeting act, this is to announce the adequate notice that this meeting has been provided. Also, pursuant to this two thousand twenty-three final amendment regulation of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Burlington, time shall be set aside on the agenda for receipt of public comments. Public comments will be received with respect to agenda items prior to board consideration of resolutions to be adopted. An additional opportunity for public comment will occur later in the meeting. Public comments shall be limited to four minutes per speaker. Unused time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons may speak once per public comment, period. I direct the deputy clerk to enter into the minutes of this meeting this public announcement and the events written notice of this meeting. Commissioner Ekel?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connell?
Here.
Deputy Director Polian?
Here.
Commissioner Singh?
Here.
Director Hobson?
Here. Thank you, Erin.
We will now move on to approval of minutes. I'm looking for motions to approve the minutes of public and conference meetings on February eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Noted. Motion passes. We will now move on to recognitions. This month, tonight, we are recognizing Black History Month and the contributions of some of our outstanding Black readers from our county who are helping break barriers, inspire present and future generations. Senator Singleton, please join me up front. Senator Singleton, you have to stand here while I read all this amazing stuff about you.
I'm slow.
Okay. That's a first. For those of you who don't know, Senator Troy Singleton is the first person of color from Burlington County to serve in the New Jersey Senate. He was raised in Willingboro and graduated from Willingboro High School and earned his bachelor's degree in business administration from Rowan University. Senator Singleton started in government as an intern in the Seventh District Office of Assemblymen Conaway and Connor. He quickly moved up the ranks to become a legislative director and then deputy executive director of the New Jersey Assembly Majority Office. He was also chief of staff to former Assembly Speaker Jill Roberts. After working behind the scenes, he ran for office in two thousand eleven, winning an assembly seat in the Seventh District. He became a senator in two thousand seventeen. The senator has become a leading voice on numerous issues, and he has succeeded in getting significant proposals approved and signed into law. These include bills including increasing the penalties for illegal gun trafficking and others to prevent domestic violence, expand educational opportunities, and promote job creation. Among his recent accomplishments, Senator Singleton helped guide landmark environmental justice legislation to become law. He was also a key advocate in creating the Black Heritage Trail. I could go on, but you guys don't want to continue to listen to me, and I don't want to continue to listen to me. Senator Singleton is an outstanding public servant and continues to find ways to make a difference. So on behalf of our board, we want to thank you, and we want to present you with this certificate. Would you like to say a few words?
First of all, thank you and thank this body of members who I hold in such high regard and know the work they did for them, to our incredible staff and to all those who will be honored this evening. The strength of our community is always in our diversity. Our diversity has made us strong. It is not a negative, it's a positive when we have voices that come from all different walks of life and different backgrounds. We're able to contribute so much to make Burlington County the greatest place in this state to live, work, and play. I'm honored that my friends and colleagues here felt me worthy of this acknowledgement. Salute all of those who will be honored this evening and wish you all an incredible meeting, free of any drama, and just believe everyone can get back home to the safety of their friends, new families, and loved ones. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, once I would next honor read, would Renette Smith Powell and Destiny Powell please come forward. All right, you two now have to stand here while I read all this amazing stuff, right? Then we'll draw our hugs and then we'll get back to you. Renette and Destiny are Burlington County residents who have written several children's books and activity books, including Cory Hates COVID, Cory Beats Bullying, Cory Conquers COVID, and Cory Shares a Secret. They operate Nettie, Nana, and Friends, an entertainment company specializing in puppet shows, parties, and live performances for children. Renette is an educator in Willingboro. She grew up in North, so did I, and got her start in education there before relocating to Burlington County. The parents started writing books to help teach kids about COVID, mental health, and other important topics. The puppet shows also cover African-American and multicultural awareness. Renette and Destiny use their creativity and intellect to educate and empower youth. On behalf of the Burlington County Commission Award, we want to thank you so much for educating and inspiring unders. So, please accept this certificate on our behalf. Congratulations. It's beautiful.
There's one for her too.
My apologies, that's...
I got one too.
Of course. I apologize. Yes, of course. All right, here. Would you guys like to say a few words?
Oh, my goodness. What an honor it is to be here this evening. I thought about it as soon as I got the call. It's all that's been on my mind. And I must say thank you. Thank you for just considering us and honoring us in this way. It is a pleasure and a blessing to be able to write books, produce children's plays, and acting and performing arts. And I honor God in what I'm doing. So, to know that you also find the value in what we do and you're honoring us tonight, I am thrilled, and I'm grateful, and I'm thankful. And thank you, everybody, for spending this time with us and sharing this evening. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'd like to start off by saying thank you for letting us come here tonight. It's a huge honor. And I would like to say thank you for acknowledging us because there's a lot of people out here who did the same thing, but you chose to bring us here and want to say thank you and give us these achievements. So, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Okay, so we're going to move on. Now, I'd like to invite the organizers and student designers of the Rowan College of Burlington County Black History Fashion Show to come forward.
How are you?
Hello, I'm Yenisha. It's very nice to meet you.
I'm Ahmaud, she's a Burlington County resident.
Come on, congratulations on meeting. Come on, come on, act like we know each other. Right, okay, now you've got to know each other. You've got to stand here while I read all this good stuff. Okay, so just smile, smile while people see you. The fashion show started after Willingboro residence Gina and Lamont. Am I saying your name correctly?
Yes.
Gina and Lamont Bowling, who are the founders of Atlantic City Fashion Week, enquired about partnering to support the college students' designers. From those conversations came the idea of a February devoted, a February show devoted to multicultural fashions that mixes both student and professional designers and models. This year's show was held at RCBC Mount Holly Cape, Mount Holly Centers, and was one of the most successful yet. With us tonight are Lisa Steinberg, the college fashion program coordinator, Gina and Lamont Bowling, as well as the student designer, Rishay Cole, and Ta'wul Adukulay. Forgive me if I did not pronounce that correctly. We also want to recognize student designers, Alexander Friend, Malika Michaela Hunt, Danielle Allen, who created designs but were not able to attend this evening. So, on behalf of the board, we want to congratulate you and thank you for what you're doing to educate and build awareness around Black History and the culture for shining a spotlight on our college and the opportunities available to students. So, I have several certificates here. All right, so this one is for the both of you.
Thank you.
Lisa Steinberg, this one is for you. Rishay Cole, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Richard.
Richard.
Uh, Richie?
Oh, okay. My apologies. Ta'wul, I know, I guess.
Ta'wul.
Ta'wul. And the rest of the certificates, okay. And the other certificates are for the folks who are not.
I can bring it to them.
Okay, very good. So, Alexander will receive his certificate, Michaela and Danielle. So, I will make sure you get them.
I will see them tomorrow.
Outstanding. So, we'll give them to you and now, if you would, like I said, you were.
Absolutely. First, I'd like to thank the board commissioner for, I think, thirty years I still.
Of course.
It's funny because you put Gina and Lamont as certificates. I said, well, we've been sharing everything for thirty years. But I wanted to thank you guys so much for taking the time to not only honor us but to honor the students. Our job is easy. We put stuff together. We find very talented individuals like these guys, and we just put them on a platform. So, we get way too much credit for that. It's definitely the hard work that these guys put in to make it happen, but I just, on behalf of Atlantic City Fashion Week and what we do on my staff, I just want to say thank you for recognizing us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody. Thank you so much for this invitation. As the head of the fashion department at Rowan College Burlington County, we get the opportunity to collaborate. This has been an amazing collaboration. Students absolutely love it, right? It's their first opportunity to experience a fashion show during this very culturally diverse time, and it's just been absolutely wonderful for the program. And we just absolutely love it. And we thank you so much for honoring, especially here also, it's that, there's the show. We are the community.
I want to thank Gina and Lamont for the opportunity, Lisa and the rest of the fashion department, and RCBC, and BG. So, thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome. I want to say thank you for organizing and giving us the opportunity. I really wanted to do it, and then when she showed up and said, "Be cool", I was so excited. And then I want to thank the school for allowing us to, you know, be able to participate. And for this award, it means a lot. So, thank you so much.
Come on, guys, feel like we know each other. You guys want to hold your certificates up? There we go. Well, thank you.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
I want, sorry, the additional certificates. Thank you. All right, thank you all for all who attended. Moving on, we will now have our first public hearing on ordinance two zero two three dash zero 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 five three. Erin, please read the title. Ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero 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 five three of the County of Burlington, New Jersey authorizing and adopting an assessment on certain services furnished by hospitals located within the county's border for the purpose of increasing funding to support provision of necessary services by such hospitals to low-income citizens and provide new fiscal resources to the County of Burlington. Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on ordinance two zero two three dash zero 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 five three? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance two zero two three dash zero 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 five three on second reading? Sir? Thank you. Erin, please go over call. Commissioner Ekel?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connell?
Yes.
Deputy Director Polian?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Director Hobson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are now having a public hearing on Burlington... I'm sorry, for the record, could you just officially close that public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I did. Okay, so I will now close this public hearing on ordinance, on public hearing ordinance two zero two three dash zero 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 five three. We are now having a public hearing on Burlington County's proposed grant application to the State of New Jersey Green Acres Program to fund accessible playground improvements at Long Bridge Park in Haynesport. I'm going to turn things over now to Mary Pat Robby, Director of Resource Conservation, to explain a little bit more about this grant application. Mary Pat?
Thank you, Director Hobson.
You come to the microphone. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program is making grant funding available to counties to develop and improve park properties with accessible play features. Applications for the Jake's Law Accessible Playground Program must be submitted by March first. Burlington County intends to submit an application for these funds. This public hearing is a requirement of the application process. All grant materials discussed at tonight's hearing, including the park concept plan, cost estimate, and environmental impact assessment, are available for review and comment on the county's website. As shown on the concept plan and the idea boards that are displayed out in the hallway, Burlington County is seeking to redevelop existing playgrounds at Long Bridge Park in Haynesport Township with new nature-themed inclusive play features, making the park more welcome to all. The improvements will primarily use natural materials and offer environmental, educational opportunities. Some features of the new areas will include large play pieces, imaginative play elements such as bird's nests, climbing boulders, embankment slides, group swings, and accessible paths to upper and lower tier play areas. Existing pavilions will be enhanced by new plantings, accessible seating, and connection to park trails, parking areas, and the restroom facility. As part of the application process, we are required to assess the environmental impacts of the proposed new playground development at the park. The assessment report dated February third, two thousand and twenty-three concluded that the proposed playground improvements will provide additional active recreation and environmental educational opportunities to update the existing park. The report noted that no park uses, no new park uses will be developed. The proposed improvements have been designed to avoid removal of any large trees. Only some saplings and invasive trees will be removed. An area of existing maintained and irrigated turf will be reduced to make room for the expanded nature playground. Stormwater will be handled largely by using previous playground surfacing and best management practices such as bioretention systems and rain gardens. Grading to provide accessibility will work with existing topography to preserve existing trees. A national heritage data request form to determine the presence of threatened and endangered species has been submitted. Results are still pending. A review of the site using the Rutgers University flood mapper tool shows it will not be impacted by predicted sea level rise. The project area is not within a known regulated area, so it is not anticipated that any environmental permits will be required. A soil erosion and sediment control permit will be needed. All disturbed areas will be planted with native trees and vegetation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Pat. The public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to comment on the proposed grant application? Yes, please go forward.
I'm Evan sixty-three, Perry Drive, Haynesport. First of all, can I just say how pleased Haynesport is that this is going to happen to our beloved Long Bridge Park? It's a complete gem. We're very proud of it. We love having it in our town, and we obviously love the idea of having an inclusive playground. So, thank you very much for doing this. I just, I did gather some comments from residents, so I'm gonna share them with you. One resident wanted to ask if we are replacing the existing mulch with a safer rubberized surface. I looked at the application. I couldn't see any details on that. Perhaps you could...
Mary Pat, shaking her head, yes?
Yes, it is on, and to replace the existing mulch.
With the rubber surfaces?
Some areas will have the rubber. Some will just have a different type of mulch.
Okay, a new mulch. Okay, awesome. One resident wanted to know if this, is anyone concerned about the wildlife in the park, sort of getting too close to this new facility, like coyotes, foxes, things that could be of danger to the children?
It is an existing park, and we have not had any such problems.
I didn't think so, but, you know, that was what was asked. So, it is a park, and we obviously wildlife do exist in a park. And then a third resident, final comment, wanted to know about pesticide use in the park and whether we use safe pesticides for, because obviously the children are going to be in the area.
Yes, we do try to use all safe pesticides. In fact, we have gone over to mostly organic turf treatments to eliminate the use of a lot of pesticides and pesticides.
Perfect. And then, once again, thank you so much. We really love having this park in Haynesport.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment on the proposed grant application? Seeing none, I will close this portion of public comments for the proposed grant application. We will now move on to public comment on agenda items only. Anyone who wishes to speak on other topics, we'll have a chance to do so later in the meeting. If you return the sheet, please state your full name and address to the record. As a reminder, each speaker is limited to four minutes and may only speak once per public comment portion. All right, so I have a list here. So, our first person to speak is Liz Lopez. Liz, your questions on agenda items?
Yes. First, I wanted to say thank you, Director, for presenting the, I just want to say that...
Your name and your name.
Liz Lopez ninety-eight, Levelthwaite, Mount Holly, New Jersey. I want to say thank you again for presenting the award. And I also want to thank to Daniel for attending, you know, live reading. I just want to say thank you for, to clarify. First, the question is the bill list. I want to know if Anna is who asked Erin or Ashley. Can anybody could bill list section thirteen on my phone? Could you clarify this for me? It'll probably take a couple of minutes, a couple of seconds.
I don't know what your question is. And this is public...
The current, uh, no, for the last meeting. I've written, I openly requested, and I read the whole thing. It took me two days. I'll probably in the second section of the meeting. I want to know if you are...
Do you have a comment on this public?
Oh, yes.
And then your other questions, if they're not related to the agenda, will have to be in the next public portion.
Okay, my agenda item is J five, twelve, and nineteen. That's all. All three have been done.
J five is just adding an attorney to our qualified pool list, just at the states here. J twelve, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, just at the states. We're just, we're just authorizing the Department of Human Services to grant funds to the State of New Jersey for Human Services Division. I'm not, you just need a clarity on what we're doing there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's just, it's just authorization to accept services for the homeless grant funds from the State of New Jersey. And for J nineteen, Deputy Director will respond.
Yes. During the nineteen twenty road program, we appropriated X number of funds to see that program throughout the county. Overlay is instead of milling and going down through the base, it's a simple overlay of the road to get extended life. And what we found out was we did not expend all the money we appropriated, and that figure, one million four hundred fifty-two eight twenty-eight nineteen, is what it ended up being. There was a reduction. So, we didn't use all the funds.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I'll wait for the next section.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Anna Evans.
No, I just wanted to speak about the Fox, though.
Oh, okay, very good. Next, we have Fern Aleth.
Fern Aleth, two twelve, Ranko, this avenue of Delanco. Question pertaining to J six, the memorandum of understanding and collective negotiations agreement goes back to January first, two thousand twenty-one. So, I guess through the negotiations, that's going to be retroactive as far as the agreements, and that's all the way through to December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five.
Do you have a question or...
No, it's just a...
Oh, okay.
Just, I guess my question was, was that going to be retroactive to the twenty-first and that encompassed that agreement? My other question was on J twenty-two, and the period involved is July first, two thousand twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Who's your comment?
I guess my question is, why are we dealing with something that, from back then, and here we are, two thousand twenty-three?
Ashley, I don't... This is just accepting the funds, and again, this is just public comment. But this is for the prosecutor's office or for the grant money?
Okay, so, that's accepting funds now for that time period?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And then on J twenty-six, it lists subgrants and dealing with twelve different organizations. Where would that list be available from or set in?
I actually have a question or a summary on it to celebrate the grants that we're giving out.
Okay, we'll look forward to it.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else for public comment on agenda items? Do we have anyone else for public comment on agenda items? Yes, sir.
How do you get a chance to sign in?
If you could come to the mic and say your name and your address, please.
I just want to check the, I think there's different numbers that I had.
Give me your name and town for the record, please.
I'm Gary Rivera, one thirty-eighth, Wednesday in West Hampton. On agenda item, I think you've already answered this, J five. I think I was just asking for some context on that award. I'm sorry, can you say it again?
It's a pool of our attorneys. We reopen the pool.
And they're representing the prosecutor's side of the...
No, they represent the state.
The state, okay. All right, thank you. I'm... I guess it's J eleven. I wrote down J ten. My apologies here. I guess my comment is, I hope you vote in favor of accepting the donation. And I wanted to, I think it's J... Yeah, I guess it's J twenty-nine. The... My comment is, there was another vendor from the prior session that was approved, a completely different vendor. I'm just wondering if there's any context around two separate vendors for election-related expenses, et cetera. Maybe I'm thinking just economy of scale going with one vendor unless one vendor's not able to provide the services or solutions. That's all.
These different vendors for different equipment?
Okay, yeah, I just double-checked on that. And then... And then it's letter K, the appointments. Hopefully, the, these folks that you're appointing are gonna be present. If they are, maybe you could introduce them to us. Be nice to meet them. Would be helpful also if they had shared any sort of vision statement for how they want to perform in that role. And also, in terms of, you know, the kind of role that they're gonna play, perhaps you can share a little bit about what their expectations are for that role. And really, what I'm getting at is, in my touch for West Hampton, our frontline is under tremendous pressure from development. And we're looking for any resource that might be able to help mitigate some of that development. I'm just wondering if these folks on the Agriculture Development Board could be such a resource that we could consult with. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Do we have anyone else for public comment on agenda items? Do we have anyone else for public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, I am closing this portion of public comment. We will now move on to resolutions. I would like to make a motion to approve resolutions J one through J fifteen for unanimous consent.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Deputy Director, pull in.
Thank you, Director. I'd like to move resolutions J sixteen through J twenty-one for unanimous consent.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Epple?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolutions J twenty-two through J twenty-seven for unanimous consent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner O'Connell?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to move resolutions J twenty-eight and J twenty-nine for unanimous consent, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We will now move on to appointments by director. I'm appointing the following members to the Burlington County Agriculture Board for one, for a one-year term effective February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three to February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Kevin Sparkman, Dan Kennedy, Ed Cohen, Randy Rothmel, Brian Listini, Ila Vazallo, Philip Prickett, John Pubic, Wes Johnson, Paul Shin, Sherry Dudas, Stephen Specca, and an alternative, an alternate Jeff Togler. We will now move on to questions from the media. Do we have any questions from the media? Do we have any questions from the media? Seeing none, we will move on. We will now move on to public comment on non-agenda items. As I stated before, each speaker is limited to four minutes. It may only speak one time. When it is your turn to speak, please state your full name and address for the record. On our list first, we have Mr. Luis Lopez.
Luis Lopez, nine eighty, Level Drive, Mahaly, New Jersey. Wanted to thank you again to Dan and Connor for viewing that space relies on West Hampton Township meeting. Approximately sixty people came. It was a very important meeting. All the residents there was giving concern. I hope evolution appointment, the last of evolution appointment you have with all the people, I hope I could help West Hampton, you know, relieve some pressure. I would love to see that, the help. And well, also I thank you, Felicia Hutton, for the first hour for Black History Week. Appreciate that. And like I say, if I wanna see the video of the township, it should be available for about thirty minutes. I mean, I just wanna get home and looking view. And I, and one question I would like to ask, I don't know if I asked it. Ashley or Aaron, can anyone to look at this bill list for a second? Could you clarify?
Louis, I, if there's some response to an Oprah?
Yeah, no, I'm just curious. I bet the whole thing, I don't know.
I can't give you legal advice, but I can look at your question after the meeting.
Oh, okay. I very appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Ms. Phillips.
Good evening, everybody in general. My name is America Phillips. I live in one fifteen Tennessee Trail, Bransville, New Jersey. I got a question for the commissioners. I grabbed it to your attention, you know, in the last meeting in reference to those guys, you know, for the Berlin transportation. Is anything you guys found around? If they can do something for the, those residents who gets away from the buses in very bad weather sometime there? There ain't no venture, there is nothing in there. There is some of them here, but some of them, the majority they don't.
Oh, you can, we'll, we'll address the, you can just, our comments, you can continue.
Okay, now I grabbed it up to your attention, and that also, five thirty is Route seventy is. The springtime is coming. Traffic is going to get very heavy. And the people is coming out of the state. They are the one bring out radars, radars in this state. And for that, the least we can keep them safe. I would love to let attention also formal circle. Formal circle is very dangerous. They have to do something about it. Somebody is going through a straight. They drove a straight. There is no, the only sign they have in there, a little circle in there. There is no lights. Two oh six Royal Lion Circle. They got lights there. And they even have a state police officer in there in daytime. I traveled the road most seventy of the day. But we don't have nothing in ours. I just hope the county get together with the state because I'm pretty sure that everybody gotta work together. Townships, county, and state. This is the only way keep the world moving. We cannot just work alone. We need the help from other places. Because I was traveling myself. And I noticed that. I also have a question for the commissioners. I live in Pemberton Township since nineteen seventy-nine. I've been traveling and walking the trail, Pemberton Trail, the train station that no longer belong to Pemberton Township because that was a swap, was made. The county took it off. Is anything in mind, what do you guys got for the residents in there? Because everybody traveling the trail. This is the only safe trail. We can go for walk. And we don't have to worry about it for vehicles, anything. There is no facilities in there. There is no bathroom. What do you think of the people going to the bathroom? The people coming up from another, another town. They don't live in the vicinity. They can say, I'm going one. I know that we have Wawa next door, but that's not fair for Wawa where we can supply. They can supply us for our health. We got facility there. We got lane where even portable path can be put there for the people. I will appreciate that. And my next question is, I know that every single one of you guys, when you were running. I know that plenty of people coming here and complain. Did you guys go and see the problem where these people have? Or you just continue, you just listen to us here? I wanna know you made the trips and see the problems, say, for example, formal circle, formal circle, Royal Lion Circle. Five thirty east and Route seventy. Spring Lake, I know they went the year that. Were two death in twenty days. I just hope, I know I'm done. And thank you, and I will see you in two weeks, and I just hope that somebody can give me an answer tonight. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment? Yes, please.
Did sign in, sorry. Gary Rivera, one thirty-eight Winston in West Hampton. Just a couple of things that I thought maybe I would share with you. My guess is you're probably familiar with the newspaper, the Financial Times. There was an article that I saw, it was an op-ed on the twelfth of February, and I have it here. I'll give it to the clerk. But basically, it was talking about, quote, tech layouts are a golden opportunity for the public sector, right? So we know there's a lot of disruption going on in the labor market, but just briefly, quote, silicon valusha has worn off, and that's good news for the public sector if it's able to seize the opportunity. I'll let you read the op-ed here, but I think that perhaps this could be something that could be applicable here in the states. Now, it's from a European sort of viewpoint, so I just wanted to mention that. And then also, there was something in the Journal, Wall Street Journal, on the fourteenth of February. You probably have seen this reporting on the opioid fund recipients. So some of this money is now starting to flow, apparently. And what caught my eye was billions of dollars in the settlement funds are beginning to flow. The experiences of two Ohio counties highlight a new challenge, how to spend the money. So we're talking roughly, according to this article, fifty billion dollars over two decades. But those two counties in Ohio got a head start, and they're getting the money now. I'm just wondering, I'm assuming we're part of that settlement, where we are with that? When that money's gonna be flowing? Perhaps you can move us up if necessary. But apparently, they've come up with, Southern County, Cogu County have come up with a template. And so maybe it might be worthwhile to kind of see what those counties have done, faster, more efficient, to just beg, borrow, or steal what they have done, and just use it as a template for here. So just something free to think about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Do we have anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I am now closing this portion of public comment. We will now move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Singh?
Thanks a lot for coming. Congratulations to all the honors that were honored earlier. And also, congratulations and thanks to all the employees that are going to continue the work on the County Agriculture Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Connell?
Thank you, Director. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for everyone for taking the time to come out and see us tonight. I too would like to add my congratulations to those we honored tonight for Black History Month. And just to add a couple of more events that were held, on February fifteenth here in Mount Holly at the Lyceum, there was a Spirit of Freedom lecture by Eric, I forget Eric's last name on the.
Orange.
Thank you very much, from our Parks Department, concerning the tenth anniversary of the enactment of the emancipation proclamation. When somewhere between five and ten thousand people came to Mount Holly to celebrate this. Eric had a reprint of a newspaper article from the Philadelphia Inquirer. Pennsylvania Railroad actually rented extra trains to bring people into the area. Having lived in the county for as long as I had, I'd never heard that story. It's just a shame that it had to be held on a weekday at ten o'clock in the morning because the only kind of people that can attend are people like me that are retired. On the eighteenth of February, the Burlington County Underground Railroad Museum held an event in Snuffville Mansion. And with this passing of Ms. Louise Callaway, who actually founded the museum, there was a brief ceremony honoring her life. There's gonna be a celebration of her life scheduled for March in Burlington City where she actually started the museum. And then last night, I want to thank Governor Murphy for inviting our commissioner board to a Black History celebration at the Governor's Mansion Drum Thwackett in Princeton. He presented awards to several individuals, including Dr. Sam Still, the great-grandnephew of Dr. James Still, the Black Doctor of the Pines. The event was very well attended, and as we all know, Black history is American history. I was happy to attend these events. And if you see more, I would recommend you, you go, it's a great way to find out a little bit more history about our county. And then this Saturday, we have our monthly food distribution event in West Hampton from ten to twelve in the parking lot behind Burlington County Institute of Technology. Everybody get home safe, and thank you, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Epple?
Thank you, Director. Yes, once again, thank you all for coming out and being a part of the process and sharing the feedback with us. We do appreciate it. Thank you all to our, thank you to our department heads and the professionals who work for the county. Really do appreciate everything that you do for us. My appreciation also to those we honored this evening for sharing their gifts and talents with all of us. We are all better for them. And also a reminder that Burlington County Winter Restaurant Week, I believe, starts March fifth. So be sure to, to make a plan to visit the many restaurants in the county that are participating in Restaurant Week and go out and show some love for our small businesses. Thank you very much.
Deputy Director?
Thank you, Director. Echo the comments from the previous commissioners. Congratulations to all those recognized this evening. And those appointed, thanks to everyone for your comments this evening. Sometimes it might not seem as if we care, we don't listen, but that is not the case. And hopefully, the people that do make the comments, there's a little bit of a process. I would ask you to make sure that you contact our commissioner office to get the answers that you're looking for, if you're not requesting a commissioner to directly respond to you, okay? And of course, anytime anybody wishes to engage me, they simply need to send me an email. Once again, thank you so much to our department heads and directors. I've said it, I know I sound like a folly parrot, but you guys keep everything running for us and making us look good. And I, for one, and I know the commissioner board appreciate it. Safe travels home, and thanks for coming.
I would like to thank everyone for attending. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So.